All right, second item under Old Business, Discussion and Action on a Proposed Resolution Providing Direction and Authorizing the Grant of City Funds for the Renovation, Rehabilitation, and Preservation of City-Owned Oak Hill Cemetery Chapel, File Resolution Number 2014-1076. Tom?
Very good, thank you Council President Vasco. I'm Tom Presny, the Parks Director. The Parks Division requests that the City Council review a proposal presented by the Friends of the Oak Hill Chapel requesting approval to preserve, renovate, and improve the city-owned Oak Hill Cemetery Chapel. You will recall back on September 9th of 2013, staff and supported by Architect Consultant Mick Gilbertson were in attendance and presented the council with four basic alternatives for consideration relative to the chapel's future. First of all was a full renovation with handicap accessibility at a cost of some $387,000 on the high end of the project list. Next was minimal repairs at a cost of some $84,000. The third option, a minimal repairs with barrier-free building access at a cost of roughly $91,000, and finally demolition at a cost of some $31,000. Staff that evening recommended demolition of the building. However, the City Council was encouraged by the comments at that meeting by chapel supporters and offered the group, and the council offered the group, a five-month period of time to organize community support and initiate fundraising. Staff and the administration more recently has met with the Friends of Oak Hill Chapel just in the last week and discussed the future of that project and the accomplishments of the Friends Group. Now, some five months later, the committee has in fact, the chapel friends in fact have raised all the dollars expected of them which total over $40,000. The Friends of Oak Hill Chapel are led by co-presidents Richard Snyder and Jim Crittenden, and since the Friends Group is not an established 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, tax-exempt charitable organization, their donations for group improvements or for efforts from the group are being taken and deposited at the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin. The city has set aside $73,333 for the design and architecture work on the chapel at Oak Hill Cemetery. Approval of File Resolution 2014-1076 would authorize the city to grant up to that $73,333 for the Friends of Oak Hill Chapel via the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin for the renovation, rehabilitation, and preservation of the city's own chapel at Oak Hill Cemetery. It is proper to place a ceiling financially on this project at $100,000 in order for the Friends Group to remain exempt from prevailing wage requirements. Staff in our discussions with the Friends has recommended an approach whereby we would be providing basically a dollar and a half for every dollar that the Friends have contributed towards this effort. The Friends as I indicate have generated $40,000, thereby the city would recommend contributing $60,000 to make it that $100,000 ceiling on the project. As a council update, a presentation will be made this evening by Ken Connor. Ken maintains the website for the Friends of Oak Hill Chapel and they've been very involved with their Facebook and their Facebook efforts and visibility in the community. Questions can be shared this evening with Richard Snyder and technical volunteers who also, a number of which are in attendance this evening. Also representing the city is the city's architect and consulting support Mick Gilbertson who's in the audience this evening and would be happy to take any council questions as well. So with that, if there are council questions, I'd be happy to take them at this point. Otherwise, we have the presentation to hear from Mr. Kidder and the Friends of Oak Hill Chapel.
Okay, thanks Tom. Councilmember Marklein just put his light on, so.
Yes, I do have a question for Tom. Tom, I sent an email to you today and I appreciate the quick response, and you had also forwarded Patty Lynch to controller, and I was asking how we arrived at the number of $73,333 available for the design and architectural work on the chapel. And I was reviewing this, and it appears that in 2010 and 2011, the council had basically borrowed funds on three different, for three different reasons. A consultant review of Oak Hill Cemetery structures of $15,000 to hire a consultant to review four Oak Hill Cemetery structures, to develop an itemized list of projects necessary to ensure the continuation of the structures. This review will examine the facilities using a historical point of view, and notes that these buildings are in very poor condition, and staff wants to be proactive in developing maintain, a maintenance program, $15,000 for that. Then there was Oak Hill Cemetery Chapel carport repairs, $55,000 for tuck pointing, caulking of windows and door frames, coping joints, roof repairs, carport, foundation repairs. And then the last one was $60,000 for cemetery capital, and this was in 2011, funding amount of $60,000 for various capital items at the cemetery, including the centralization of water distribution system, acquiring equipment to develop our computer inventory of lots, and repairs to the roads within the cemetery. And then in her notes, she shows six projects that accumulated $57,000 and some odd dollars spent already to date. Is it your opinion that the money left over is, according to what the previous council did, is dedicated specifically to chap and carport repairs, or are there other things that the cemetery needs that were covered in the 2010-2011 note issues?
Very good. The majority of those expenses that you've outlined were used for general repairs at the cemetery already in primarily two areas. One was the cemetery office. We did a number of upgrades and improvements to make that building presentable and consistent with our city buildings. The other area was with the roads at the cemetery. We did a number of repairs and patchings of the road system there, which is well over 100 years old. So of that, that $60,000 that you're indicating, those were general repairs in nature. The rest of the money that was set aside by prior councils was focused on this building. The $15,000 that you mentioned was focused specifically on creating the plans and specifications for the building, and that's currently being accomplished by Mick Gilbertson. And the balance of the money, the $55,000, was set aside with the intent of making those necessary repairs to the chapel, to the portico chair and the building itself.
So it's fair to say that the money that still exists is dedicated specifically for the chapel repair?
That's my belief, and yes, we've had that understanding throughout the course of this effort.
Okay, and there's no other things needed at the cemetery that you thought would be included in these note issues from the past?
Well, just to point out, as in a side project, another pot of funding that the council has authorized previously is for the maintenance building. We've identified that as a high priority for repair at the cemetery, and there is $150,000 set aside for the renovation and upgrade of that maintenance building, which is scheduled for next year. But beyond that, I believe we're in pretty good order.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your help.
Are there any other questions for Tom? I don't see any, so we're ready for the presentation.
Okay. With that, we'd ask Ken Kidder to come forward. Connor, excuse me, my apologies.
No problem.
If you just want to, well, you're going to bring that up, I would say we're going to have some folks leave, so that'll work out perfectly.
Thanks for coming.
All leaving. That's all right.
I'm sure they don't know what you're talking about, otherwise they would have stayed. I'm sure of it.
Okay. All right. My name is Ken Connor. I represent, or at least I'm speaking for, the Friends of Oak Hill Chapel tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, this is loud, isn't it, for your time, and I would also ask the Friends of the Oak Hill Chapel and our supporters to stand up and show your support. All right. On September 9th, you stated that someone in the community needed to step up, form a group to raise funds, and prepare a plan to save the Oak Hill Chapel from demolition. The Friends of Oak Hill Chapel was formed. Since then, we have raised over $40,000 in contributions. Our group has grown, we have spread the word about the chapel, and we have received overwhelming public support. At this time, we feel that we have met the challenge and ask the council's permission to proceed with the project. Last week, we provided you with the electronic copy of the package, and we just handed out a hard copy now, of the restoration plan as it sits at this moment for your review. We consider this to be a living document. It's going to change and grow as we find out more and as more things are done. It's not set in stone right now, okay? In December, we started giving presentations at local service clubs. Among those, the Morning and Noon Rotaries, the Kiwanis, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Morning and Noon Optimists, and the Golden Kays. We explained the history of the chapel and the need to save it. We asked them to spread the word and help in any way that they could. We gained new members, new ideas, and financial support. They asked us many questions, but we never received opposition to saving the chapel. We've had three open houses for the community. We wanted to show them that chapel wasn't a dark dingy building, it was fallen down. We displayed some of the stained glass that had been found in the basement. Before the second open house, Richard Snyder removed one of the 44 stained glass windows, took it back to his shop, completely restored it, and reinstalled it so we could see what it looked like at the second open house, to give us an idea of what a total restored stained glass windows would look like. One down, 43 to go. During the open houses, we talked about the history and past uses of the chapel. We heard residents reminisce about being at services in the chapel over 60 years ago. One gentleman remembered hearing taps and the 21-gun salute on the hillside behind the chapel back in the 40s. In spite of all the nasty weather that we had in their three open houses, we received over $2,000 in donations at each open house, and it snowed at every one of them. In addition to the three open houses, we've had numerous fundraising events. We wish to thank the Indoors Farmative Market, Mocha Moments, Blackhawk Community Credit Union, Century Foods, the Looking Glass Bar and Grill, My Apartment Restaurant, Max Pizza Shack, Culver's Restaurant, and the Eagleland Family Restaurant. We also have had articles in the Gazette, videos on JATV, and a feature on WISC TV Channel 3 in Madison. At this time, we have over 221 different contributors, numerous cash contributions, and we now have over $40,000. Once this project is approved, we can start applying for grants and other funding. On January 28th, 2014, a meeting took place between the Friends of, Friends Group and the city staff. The result of that meeting was the city is willing to work closely with the Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery as they take on the responsibility for restoration of the chapel. From our discussions with many city residents, we have learned that they remember final services for loved ones in the chapel. They need a place where they can go and remember. Also, current residents would appreciate a place to hold services down at the cemetery. Short little story, in 1958, a young man named John Harry was working at the Oak Hill Cemetery trimming the grass around the headstones. He learned the Cemetery Association was going to be removing all the items inside the chapel so that they can make more room for storage. And he asked, "What's going to happen to the pump organ?" Because they had a beautiful old pump organ from 1899. They told him that we'd sell it if somebody wanted it. So John offered him $5, and he accepted. John still has the receipt, and at this point, 56 years later, it's still sitting in his living room. He did take it home, and that was his wedding present to his new bride. We told him now he's going to have to get a new one. I heard this story in August when I was on a service call with at John's house. He told me he felt like he was the organ's caretaker. He didn't want it to end up in Chicago or somewhere out of state. He wanted it to stay in Janesville where it belonged. So several weeks later, Jackie Wood talked to my wife Peg about being on the new committee to save the Oak Hill Cemetery. We both volunteered to help, and then during one of those early Friends meetings that we had, suddenly I had one of these aha moments. I know where the organ is for the chapel, you know? So I went and approached John and Shirley, and they were very excited about the chance to donate the organ when the chapel restoration is finished. And John and Shirley even got a front-page story in the Gazette on it, the organ donors, which we still get a laugh over, yes. The chapel was built in 1899 by the Oak Hill Cemetery Association, as you know. It is one of less than six Gothic revival-style churches left in the city of Janesville, and none are of this age. It needs to be preserved for future generations. The goal of the Friends of Oak Hill Chapel is to rescue the chapel, secure its restoration, promote its use in historic value, and maintain it in top condition. So in closing, we feel that we have met what you have asked of us, and we ask the council's permission to proceed with this project with the cooperation of the city management. We ask that you OK the transfer of the remaining $73,333 of city funds for the chapel maintenance to our account at the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin. With the $40,000 we have raised and the existing $73,333, we would have a total of $113,333 to do the stabilization and proceed to a total restoration, which is our end goal. Upon recognition of the qualifications of the members of Friends of Oak Hill Chapel, it is hoped that a strong unified agreement between the city of Janesville and the Friends Group can be reached. Our common goal remains the restoration of the Oak Hill Chapel and its availability to be, I'm sorry, and its availability to all people in the community, both now and in the future. At this point, any questions? We have Richard Snyder.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'll say that it's wonderful to see everybody here. I think it's fair to say that the meeting that we had before the, you know, this new year, the intent was we weren't even sure if there was an interest, and obviously there is an interest, and it's been a sustainable interest, and it's been an interest during, I can't think of my time on the council for six years that any citizen group has raised $40,000 in three months. I feel pretty comfortable saying that. So I want to thank you for your efforts and for your passion and for your desire to restore this. I do have a question. In this packet that you sent us electronically, and this, when I look at the resolution, the resolution reads, "A Resolution Providing Direction and Authorizing the Grant of City Funds for the Renovation, Rehabilitation, and Preservation of City-Owned Oak Hill Cemetery Chapel." That's how the resolution reads to us. And you've put together this awesome packet and broken it down very nicely from a vision standpoint, and I need to ask this because there's private money, $40,000, and there's also public money involved. And as a city council member, we have to be good stewards with the taxpayers' money. So when I look at this and I see how it's laid out, and I get to restoration, and that's why I'm hoping you can help me out, I don't see a plan for restoration. Has your group devised a plan as to prioritizing what it is you want to fix and how you're going to do that? Because as I read this resolution, I read it as that money's allocated toward those occurrences, and yet when I look in here, I don't see that. I see the restoration as, now I can't find it, but it's there, I saw it, determine the scope, determine the scope each part of the restoration. And so I guess my question is, has there been any, other than asking for the money, and don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to understand, where are your priorities? What are you, I don't see that in here.
Andrew, Richard? Yeah. Yep. My name's Richard Snyder. I live at 2001 Wesley Avenue Apartment 107, Janesville, Wisconsin, resident of Janesville. The restoration basically is to bring it back to the normal, the beginning of where it was in the beginning, 1899, and that would be involved with the Wayne's Coat siding, for one, it's all been painted, stripped down to the natural finish, which is stated in documentation that it was natural, local, red birch. And we even removed some of it just the other day last week, and you can see the red patina on that wood underneath the paint. We would remove the carpeting that was put down in '75 when they did a $5,000 upgrade, and refinish all the hardwood floors, and remove the popcorn textured walls and ceiling, and probably put a skim coat on and repaint. And of course, all the stained glass windows would be removed and rebuilt on the north side where most of them are all intact. On the south side, there's 80% missing. They would come last because you would take the north side, you have all the designs, all the patterns, and rebuild them with new glass and replace them. The two east, the front of the chapel, they would also be rebuilt and replaced for the ones missing. Then we would put in the fountain in the front, and that's missing, we found part of it in the basement, and also do the landscaping, the roofing, of course, all the tuck pointing, the foundation work, a complete restoration. And we're breaking it down into each and every job with work orders, how many people it would take, the materials that are needed, estimation of each job, timeframe, and also we have suppliers online that will donate material. And in fact, I have one of the biggest suppliers of stained glass onboard with donating supplies and material as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions while Mr. Snyder is here from any other council members? I don't see any, thank you.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of the council discussion?
I don't know if Tom could come back up for just a second. So is the group looking for $60,000 or the full, because if we do the full $73,000, that would put them over the $100,000 mark?
That's correct, and that was, you know, kind of a transition that we've come to. We weren't clear that they would raise $40,000, but their success has been overwhelming, obviously, and with that $40,000, now we would like to recommend a paring back of that, at least at this initial phase. I think the city attorney's review of the council in preparation of the council resolution would authorize up to the $73,000 if it's warranted. One other point that I might add, just to fulfill the vision here, is that we have the consulting architect preparing the plans and specifications, and once those are put out and utilized by the Friends, we'll actually be able to refine what the total dollar amount of this project is. It won't exceed $100,000, but we're not clear at what that actual cost will be. So our recommendation is initially $60,000 coming from the city matched by the $40,000 from the Friends, and then the balance of those funds would be available for future council direction for us.
Okay, and I think that's great. I mean, I think normally when the city contracts work out, I would support the prevailing wage law and making sure that workers are being paid a fair wage, but obviously with a great group who is volunteering a lot of their time and a lot of their own personal money, I definitely think there's always room for exception, so I support that. And then the second question was, and I think I saw a hint of it, the South, Southern Central Wisconsin Foundation, there's a lot of words in there, they would then be overseeing the receipts and transactions and the monies that are being used for this process?
That's correct. We'll want a complete accounting of all of the expenditures and approval by staff as being appropriately placed before we provide reimbursement.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have right now.
Councilmember Farrell?
Thank you. There's a provision in the resolution, I just want to, I don't know if Tom, if you could clarify it, or the city manager, but it says the city manager shall have the authority to determine and require the proper mechanisms, means, and timing for the appropriated expenditures of the city's grant monies for this project, and may take actions there to, from time to time, as he determines to be in the best interests of the city, of the project, and the public. I take that, Mr. City Manager, that you will be determining when funds will be transferred on the project and make, determining the timing and communicating directly with the committee.
That's correct, Councilmember Farrell.
Okay.
And if I could just elaborate a little bit, I think what, what the benefit of this arrangement sets up is, is a partnership between the city and the Friends Group, one that is certainly, I have oversight of to make sure that we're spending these city funds properly and on the right, in the right priorities, if you will, but it's done in cooperation with this fine Friends Group that's here before us this evening, and that I would then also be very cognizant of and careful to ensure that city funds are being spent on the proper, on the proper priorities, and so it's in partnership that we would do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Marklein?
Haven't quite got it worked out in my mind yet. Tonight, are we looking at basically doing what we call pre-qualified or alone commitment? Because we really don't have plans, and we really don't have cost numbers, and we really don't have a scale and specifications of what we're actually funding. And so, you know, in my business, the customer would come in qualified, pre-qualified, and they've got the down payment, we're making the loan. I don't see a problem tonight us pre-qualifying it, but at a certain point in time, it's nice to see where the numbers are and a priority list so that we don't go into this thing with good intentions and find out it's a $200,000 restoration just to do minimal and get halfway into it and find out we're stuck. So I'm not 100% comfortable with the resolution as, I think it's a goal, I think it's a great project, I'm amazed and proud of the city of Janesville and this committee for what they've done, but there's a lot of question marks on this financially and the specifications before we go much further.
Councilmember Marklein, I think what I think is important to do is, is that Mick Gilbertson's in the audience this evening, and as I understand, he's working on some of the design specifications, which will be ready about mid-March, and that's what will help us define what those priorities are. And so really, what the, what the resolution is asking for you to do is allow me, as the city manager on the city's behalf, to work with the Friends Group, to be able to transfer funds, to be able to approve and to select what those priorities are, and then to oversee the actual implementation of the work that's being done on behalf of that Friends Group. And, you know, I would imagine that at some point, I have to come back to the council and explain, you know, kind of how that money has been spent and what we've been able to achieve, but I think that this gives the city manager the authority to work these details out without having to come back to the council every two weeks to ask for, you know, another $10,000 to do this, or another $20,000 to do that. So I think that this is just a mechanism that makes and explain, you know, kind of how that money has been spent and what we've been able to achieve, but I think that this gives the city manager the authority to work these details out without having to come back to the council every two weeks to ask for, you know, another ten thousand dollars to do this, or another twenty thousand dollars to do that. So I think that this is just a mechanism that makes this an easy project for the partnership.
I'm not asking for them to come back every time they want another draw. I'm not asking that. Just want to make sure before we start into this and start actually doing it, that we know that we're going to stay within the ten thousand or the hundred thousand dollar budget.
Well, and I think the thing that's kind of kept us in focus is that the original estimate for option number three was ninety-one thousand, and so that's inside the hundred thousand, and so that's really kind of our gauge for what we expect to be able to achieve with the expenditure of the hundred thousand or less.
Is that realistic? And is that what the Friends Group here is asking for? Because when you go through their goals, they're working toward full restoration, but option number three is minimal.
And again, as I understand the project, and I kind of came into this midstream, but my understanding is, is that what the Friends Group is asking of the city at this time is for preservation or restoration of the basic requirements to keep it from imploding and to be able to be used minimally so that it can be a functioning facility. I think that the Friends Group, frankly, from my understanding, has some very, very grand ideas and thoughts on how this facility will be used in the future, but I think it's premature for us to make any determinations about that. I think our priority needs to be preservation, minimal restoration, to make sure that it's a safe place for people to be in and to operate, and, you know, that's really what we're asking is, and I think that that's achievable inside that hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. I'm really glad we're not tearing it down. I really am. I'm tickled pink. My wife is really going to be happy because I said her name the last time.[1245.83][1245.83](Laughter). And I am too. To where it is on the November one, and it would be a shame to tear it down, and I'm really happy that we came up with the money. I just want to make sure now that we see a successful conclusion of this down the road, because we start off all on the high hopes and happy, and when the going gets rough, we want to make sure we're able to keep going. That's my only fear going forward with the little bit that we know. So I'm going to be going on trust and voting in favor of this, but it's, I'm nervous.
Well, and if I may, I'm going to, that's kind of the point that I was making when I was talking about the restoration part. Very supportive of the project, okay? But what I'm trying to understand, and maybe you can help me out, is why are we talking about allocation of funds without knowing what the priorities and the costs are? I mean, and I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking. If we know that that's coming in March, why are we having this discussion in February?
Council President Voskal, I'll tell you that the February tenth was what was directed by the council, as I understand it, back in September, and so the group used that as the target date and is coming back on February tenth. You know, due to some unforeseen circumstances, the actual design specifications that Mr. Gilbertson was going to help us with were not available for this meeting, but will be available by mid-March. And frankly, you know, as I think about these preservation topics, you know, we talk about roof, we talk about mortar and the stonework, we talk about the front portico, we talk about the flooring and the actual chapel, and very quickly, you know, we can hit that hundred thousand dollars just on those basic construction requirements and restoration requirements. So I don't have a good feel for what Mr. Gilbertson is going to be able to provide for us as far as priorities, but I'm confident that with his recommendations, we'll be able to come to an appropriate priority list that needs to be addressed in cooperation with the Friends Group, and that we'll be able to then put monies, city monies and the Friends Group's monies towards those priorities. But at this time, I don't have that priority list to provide you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Markline?
Would it be appropriate to, today, I'll give authority for the direction toward the renovation, rehabilitation, and preservation of the chapel, but withhold the authorization of the grant until mid-March?
It's up to the wishes of the council, this is...
That I'm asking.
You're at...
If that's something that we could do, and if that's something that would be amenable to the city manager and to the Friends Group.
Well, let's start with the city manager.
Okay.
I'm absolutely supportive, like, we can do that. It just adds another step in the execution of this, but if that's the council's wishes, then I can support that.
What are the wishes of the other council members? Councilmember Libert?
I think we're kind of getting caught up in the weeds a little bit. I mean, I understand wanting to have in black and white the priorities, and I think the group's done a really good job, but I trust in Mark to manage this project responsibly and to have our best interests at heart. That's why we have a city manager, not a mayor, to manage the day-to-day operations. He has a hundred million dollar budget that we also authorize him to work with, and I'm comfortable with the resolution as is, just amending it to sixty thousand. Thank you.
Well, and I can't say it enough, it's not that we're not in support, but I just can tell you from my past experience of working with other projects that we have in the city of Janesville, the Tallman House, et cetera, that restoration, preservation, those are costly projects, and so, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it's also not a lot of money. And so that's, you know, that's the challenge is, and that's why it was, from a priority standpoint, Mr. Snyder's got great ideas, and, you know, you went on for almost six minutes talking about all the things you want to do, and I'm not running for reelection, but I'm listening, hopefully, these are all council members that are and that they're listening, because who knows, depending upon the priorities, you might have to come back to the council based upon what you find out for costs as it relates to those dollar figures when they come in in mid-March. So I think that that's really, at the end of the day, that's really kind of what we're talking about, and I don't want to put words in Councilmember Markline's mouth, but I think that's where he's at. So that being said, it sounds like, I know where Councilmember Markline and I sit, other council members, are you good with the current, we would need a motion and a discussion because there is a resolution, correct? Thank you. So we would need to have that. Anyone?
I'll make a motion. I'd move that we approve File Resolution two thousand fourteen dash ten seventy-six with the one amendment changing the authorized balance from seventy-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three to sixty thousand dollars for design and architectural work for this project on hand.
This is a motion by Councilmember Libert, is there a second? No second? The motion fails. What are the wishes of the council? Councilmember Markline?
Make a motion that we adopt File Resolution two thousand fourteen, ten seventy-six, adjusted that we would provide a direction for the renovation, rehabilitation, and preservation of city-owned Oak Hill Cemetery Chapel.
Motion by Councilmember Markline, second by Councilmember Severson. Councilmember Markline, you have the floor?
I fully expect that when the numbers come through and we get a priority thing, that we will happily authorize the release of the funds, and it's nothing to do with the managerial capacities of Mr. Freitag. It's just that I think it's appropriate that we see where the dollars are going to benefit the Friends Group, the success of this project, and the taxpayers of the city of Janesville. I fully expect that when the numbers come through, we'll be able to get a meeting of the minds, and it'll be a happy conclusion, and we can go forward and do this, but right now, it's premature, so I would like to see the direction, but not the authorizing, the grant.
Thank you. Councilmember Severson?
Thank you. I think we're all in favor that we'd like to have this go forward. We've waited, I think the city's waited fifty, sixty, seventy years. I think we can wait one month, get all the information, make a decision, move forward, and get this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, in this presentation, I know that we have many well-intentioned volunteers involved in this group, but I guess I'd like to really have an idea what task are going to be done by volunteers and what's going to be contracted. For example, carpeting, are we having volunteers? I guess maybe I'm asking for too much detail, but kind of getting back to Doug's idea is when you're doing a cost quote, you put as much detail as possible. I'd really, I mean, I want to make sure that we're using volunteers, we're not doing things maybe that are beyond the scope of volunteers, and I guess I'd like to see what things we suggest volunteers can and cannot do. Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second? There's no further discussion? Please vote. And that motion passes with councilmembers Fitzgerald, Farrell, Markline, Voskal, and Severson in favor, Councilmember Libert opposed. So what's going to occur then is, in March, I'm assuming once that information is shared by Mr. Gilbertson, that will come back to council?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, do not misinterpret this. All right.
It's positive.
It is. Thank you.